Good evening, and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call the meeting to order on March 12, 2020 at 7:03 PM. Commissioner Steve, or can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brugeras.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Here.
Commissioner Corsick.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Baker.
Here.
Chairperson Sims.
Here. And now it's time for a pledge of allegiance, and that'd be by Commissioner Stevens. Please rise. Thank you. We're now moving to the approval of the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
I second.
Well, we need to, who has a quarter here to flip on this one? Who's gonna, who's gonna give up on this one? All right, we have a first by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Dejeanay. Can we have a vote, please?
It's not registering yours, sir.
Has everybody voted? What's that? Oh, mine's not? I'll try it again. Or seen yes. It's a hand sanitizer that got it. It's slippard. I did. I have, oh, there it goes again. Oh, it's six oh. I'm away, but I'm here. I'm happy and sad all at the same time.
For the record, it should be seven to one.
Yes. Oh, seven to one?
I'm so sorry. Seven to zero.
All right. Very good. Okay, that motion carries six oh one way, seven oh another way, but we'll call it seven oh all for good. All right, we have a planning official comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Knowing that coronavirus is a big topic and an important topic today, we just wanted to make the Planning Commission and the public aware of some of the things the city is doing. The city is closely monitoring the situation and has put information up on the city website so that people have a place to go to look for information. We have a webpage that talks about some of the tips. We're bringing flyers. We have them, in fact, at the back table with a lot of information on kind of best practices and things to do to stay on top of it. So we just wanted to make you aware of that. The website page is at www.movel.org/coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is the public comments procedure. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings should fill out a request form to speak. That's in the back there by the door. And the completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. And that's actually up here. And speaking to the commission, member of the public may be limited to three minutes per person except for the applicant for entitlement. Commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular item agenda. Members of the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to other members of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. Okay, so, the next item is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address or make a statement that on any item not on the agenda?
We have no speakers, sir.
Good. Okay. Thank you. The next item is approval of the consent calendar, which would be item one is the minutes of the February 27, 20 meeting.
You have a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Baker, second by Harris. Please vote. Am I missing again?
Yeah, we're having some technical difficulties with minute track today. Let's do a roll call vote.
Sure.
Commissioner Brugeras. Roll call vote, sir.
What was that again? It, it's a roll call for the, for the consent calendar. They didn't, it's not registering.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Stephen.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Yes.
Commissioner Corsick.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Baker.
Yes.
Chairperson Sims.
Motion carries seven, nothing. Okay. The next item is, is on the non-public hearing items, or, I mean, on the public hearing, excuse me, is plot, uh, plot plan for a retail center at Carmaria Avenue Endless Cell. Can we have staff report, please?
The staff report will be presented by Associate Planner Jeff Bradshaw.
Good evening, Chair Sims, members of the Planning Commission. The item presented to you this evening is a plot plant, a request from the property owner to develop a retail center. This would be phase three of the Continental East project. The, the project is located on a corner parcel of approximately 2.84 acres located at the northeast corner of La Salle Street and Carmaria Avenue. It's a property that's located within the Moreno Valley Ranch specific plan. The proposal is develop this corner with a retail center that would include four buildings arranged around a central courtyard. The intent is to provide shop space for retail, restaurant, and office uses at this location. The facility includes buildings that are one-story and then there are some two-story elements to the building. So you'd have office space available on the second floor portion of the, of the retail center as in, as demonstrated here with the floor plans. The, one of the key features of the project is a central courtyard. The buildings are arranged around this central courtyard. It would provide common seating, and there'd be amenities in, in this central courtyard that would include plants and water feature and opportunities for, for people to gather and, and as they enjoy the retail space that's being constructed here at the corner or proposed for that purpose. The elevations, excuse me, are presented here on these next slides. The proposal by the applicant is a contemporary style of Spanish colonial architecture. This is consistent with the specific plan. And the building elevations include variation in height with tower elements, decorative metalwork, arched entries, incorporates durable materials that should make this a very lasting style of architecture at this corner. The materials include stucco, estal roofing, decorative tile enhancements around the archways, and exposed wood and iron features. The staff in, in the review of this project has determined that the project qualifies as an exemption from the sequel guidelines and has determined the project would not have, have the potential for significant effect on the environment, therefore qualifies for consideration as a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill development. Notice for this project was completed by staff. We satisfied the requirements of our municipal code in, in providing notice in the newspaper as well as posting the site and also sending mailing notices out to residents within 600 feet of the, of the project site. As of this evening, I did receive two phone calls with inquiries from the public about the project. One was from an area resident, the other was a representative from the Moreno Valley Community College. I answered questions for both, and neither party indicated opposition to the project, and neither, neither group submitted comments to the Planning Commission for this, for this meeting, for your consideration. With that, staff would make the following recommendation, that the Planning Commission approved resolution number 2020-09, and therefore thereby certify the plot, that the plot plan is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, and that the Planning Commission then approved plot plan number PIN 19-0166, subject to the attached conditions of approval as, as included in resolution 20-09. And with that, that, that would complete my report. I have, I'm prepared rather to answer questions if you have those. Also, the applicant is here with us this evening, and I, and I'd be prepared to speak to the Planning Commission as well.
Great, thank you. Does Commissioners have questions of staff regarding this, this item? I think it's a good-looking project. The, the question I had is, is, does, this is not project-specific. This is maybe something that can report back on a future, in a future item. But, you know, Moreno Valley has a lot of, you know, strip malls and commercial centers, you know, neighborhood stuff, and that's neither here nor there. I, I just wondering what the vacancy rate is or the, you know, lack of occupancy. And I mean, there's some commercial, like, are you coming down Alessandro where the old 24-hour fitness, and, I mean, that's like a ghost town in there. There's, some seem to be, a lot of the centers seem to be filling up, but there's other commercials that are really hurting. So I, I guess I would just be curious of what, is there a way between building permits or, or, you know, business license and things like that? Is there a way that planning could identify or, you know, approximately what the vacancy rate is on commercial?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but we likely have those statistics.
It'd just be...
Yeah, I think one thing we're seeing more of is kind of the corner commercial, the, you know, smaller, more centralized commercials similar to this, rather than the long, wide, full corridor type of development seems to be less of something that we see. So it may be just that commercial isn't gone, it's just changing.
Yeah.
I can follow, look for those statistics though and follow up with you.
And I guess the, the only other thing, and I forget the, the new economic director, or, who was the name of the, our new economic director?
So our, Mike Lee was our Economic Development Director. I believe he's still fulfilling that role, and he is now our interim city manager.
But, who was the gentleman that was here? Mancha?
Oh, our new community development director is Manuel Mancha, yes.
So anyhow, but is, is, now that, is there things that the city, let me re-say that. Is the city actively working with, with, when you do those statistics? I guess the follow-up would be, is, is there things that the city's actively doing to help distressed centers to, to redevelop or, or do something to, to make themselves better?
Yes, our Economic Development Department is very active in not only seeking new tenants but working with existing businesses. So they do quite a lot of outreach, quite a lot, you know, they're at trade shows, marketing the city for potential businesses, and they're always on the lookout for new businesses. So they do quite a lot to bring in new businesses. Yeah, they're a whole dedicated department to it.
Okay, well, that's, we should, go ahead.
I actually had pretty much the same question because I was looking at the conditions of approval of 47 on page 23, and it, it said something about new businesses may utilize the workforce recruitment services, I guess to help hire. I wonder, us as a city, are we, I don't know what kind of leeway we may have, whether tax breaks or, or fee breaks or something like that to entice new businesses to come in, fill some of these vacancies. You know, I, that's a great idea that we can help them advertise, but let's say hypothetically speaking, business comes in and says, hey, you know what? I'm going to utilize this, and I tell you what, I'm going to try to hire 60% of Moreno Valians. And it, can the city come back the other way and say, yeah, I tell you what, we can give you this break or that break if you could...
Yeah, I'm not familiar with all the techniques that they have at their disposal, but I'm sure there are a number, and they're very kind of outgoing about using every tool they have to attract new businesses. That may be one, I'm, I'm not sure, but I can certainly ask.
Well, yeah, I think they're doing, I mean, there has been a big up, I, I, some of the ghost town commercial center are, like, the one at Alessandro and Paris and in those, you know, those seem to be starting to do things, and hopefully the one over here by IHOP and, you know, with that development going on, I can't, we proved that probably a year or so ago, but hopefully that revitalizes that, that area, so that's, that's really good. Anyhow, that's off-subject, if you could check on that, that'd be great. Any other, any questions on this? I guess this project, sorry about that diversion. No? So I guess it would be appropriate time for applicant to come up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Al Retan. I am the president of Continental East Development, and I'll talk to you a little bit about this project. First, Continental is not new to the City of Moreno Valley. We've been here now nine years. We have the privilege, privilege of owning and operating Renaissance Village, the assisted and senior living community. We are also having to deal with the coronavirus. We're pleased to report we have nothing there, but that is going to be a very challenge today, and we operate a couple of those to keep our, our seniors safe. Mr. Chairman, you brought up a very good thing, and putting on my developer hat, one of the things we do is, we're about 10 years old, and we represent a large equity group. But when we go to any area, I call it like the corner of walk and don't walk, the first thing we do is we hire a national company called the Conquer Group. And we say, okay, we want to do apartments, or we want to do retail, and we ask them, well, what do you think? And the demographics that came back two years ago on this retail is very, very strong. And the reason is, is when we originally entitled this project, we came in, in front of the Planning Commission about a year ago, and we started reporting that we had hired the Conquer Group to do new studies, and part of it was driven by the Junior College. Nine years ago, the Junior College asked us, when we approved, we had on phase one, which we now are under construction, 125 market rate apartments, that's on seven acres. The total site is 19 acres in front of you. They asked us to consider retail, and at the time I thought, after the recession, why would we consider retail? But today, your logistics centers makes your city extremely doing well. In fact, if I, if I was to probably state that, that you're not only the fourth best in this state, but probably in the country for your size, and congratulations on that. But that, what that is driving, though, is live work. And what do we mean by that? Is people like to get off the freeway, kind of live closer. And so what you see in front of you is a small community shopping center that's designed for restaurants, that's designed for a coffee shop, is designed for a bistro. More importantly, it's got a 4,600-square-foot retail complex in the middle of it for outdoor plazas. So once we get through this coronavirus, and I know we will, I think that this is going to be a stellar project because between phase one and then phase two was approved, like I said, just about this time last year, it had 112 accommodation of apartments and duplexes. This is going to set a new mark for the city. And we've worked a lot, for example, one of the challenges is that we designed a roadway system, which we call Lydia's Way, that circulates between phase one, phase two, and makes a nice potential egress on both streets for the retail center. It looks easy, but it took a lot of work, and we weren't able to accomplish that without the, the help of the staff. So we feel that we have come up with a very, very good program. We would like to have your approvals. We would normally have our architect tonight, but I do bring condolences with him, is that he had the misfortune about three months ago of, of doing a surprise birthday party tonight for his wife. So I say, well, you know, we need you here, Phil. You've been the architect for the whole thing. He says, well, I'll come, but you're going to have to give me a lifetime apartment on that site because if I do come, I'm not going to be able to go home. So you can see who won that argument. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does the Commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Do you know of, or have you had any bites on these restaurants and...
Coffee shop.
Coffee shop.
I, I'm going brain-dead on, you have another very successful, I forget if it's a bagel, but there's a company that's doing very well here, this, this expressed also interest. But I don't think we will have much difficulty, a little bit on the college. You know, part of the problem is if you're a student and having the privilege of attending that school or the college, you don't dare leave because you'll lose your parking space. Once this is up, they can walk. And so we think that, that's really why we pushed the courtyard to 4,600 feet, which is large for, the center that's proposed is, is 17,500. It's not a large center, but I think will work very, very well for the proposed community.
So you, you said you, you don't think you'll, you'll have any trouble filling this up?
I do not.
But have you actually had any...
We've had two. A coffee shop, and then, like you said, I'm having difficulty, but it's another company that's been very successful. I don't remember if it's the bagels, but...
Okay, I see.
I think it was more desserts, but we can get you the name. I just don't recall it right now, Mr.?
Thank you.
I was glad to go by the project because you kept your promise about putting the retail business in that corner, and we don't see the word gas station in this project, and you kept your word to that. And we're glad, and I know the neighborhood's glad also. Now, I believe, because I know La Salle very well, and people use it to get to Ramona like a hot cake. Every day, thousands and thousands of cars go up and down that street. You have all the houses around there. You got Moreno Beach Iris, you got the college. It's all depending what you put in that plaza. I would like to see another In-N-Out so we don't have that trouble on Frederick, but that's another, that's my opinion, that's my story, you know? That would help a lot. But I know whatever you put there, it should be successful because you do have the traffic to bring clients to that plaza. So, and I also am glad, is that the second phase that you're building out in those apartments?
No, that's the first phase.
That's the first phase, okay. Yeah, so they are going up.
Right, our, our goal would be phase two next year. Okay. Followed by the retail. But, you know, for example, we're not inexperienced with shopping centers. We own a shopping center in Murrieta. We bought it at the height of the recession, didn't have a tenant. We're completely full today. But co-founder of the company is also my wife, she's a broker, but she does a great job about, in, in leasing, and she also runs her senior facilities.
Good. I, I just thought that the project is in the right corner, and because of all the foot traffic and, and, and the cars going up and down to Ramona Expressway, I believe that the coffee shop for sure and the bagels are going to do well, you know? That's for sure, when that opens. But I'm glad that you kept your promise.
Well, I didn't have a choice. We did make that promise that we wouldn't do the gas station. You were here, you know, for that hearing.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Is there any, do we have any public speakers on this agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, then, I think we are ready for deliberations.
Well, I think it looks like a really nice plan. It, it's really well-designed, and it certainly would work well in that area, so I'm going to vote for approval.
I too feel that it is a very well-thought-out project. I just hear that his wife is a broker. I know that she knows what drives the market, and it's going to be an asset to, for the kids, basically, in that area and, and the residents, so I'm voting for it also.
Any other comments?
I, I agree with my fellow Commissioners. This is a, it's a good-looking project. I don't think we could do better, so I'm going to vote to approve it.
Well, it's, with all these approvals, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
There you go. How about a second?
A second.
All right.
Kind of read it first, I think. Yeah, I think I have to vote. Did you get that? No, okay. I vote that we approve resolution number 2020-09.
Would you continue to second that motion?
I'll second that right now.
All right, good. Okay, let's have, catch your votes, please. Well, now I'm the mover. Do we do roll call again? There used to be paper and pencil before we got technology.
Got to do with the rain.
Do, we could...
Commissioner Brugeras.
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Yes.
Commissioner Corsick.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Baker.
Yes.
Chairperson Sims.
Yes. So we, motion carries seven, zero. Congratulations. Good luck on your project. And we have staff wrap up?
Action taken by the Planning Commission tonight is an appealable action. Any interested party would need to file an appeal in writing directed to the Community Development Director within 15 days of this action. Any appeal filed would be scheduled for consideration by the City Council.
All right. Sounds good. All right, so item number two is a conditional use permit for retail cannabis dispensary. Can we have the staff report, please?
The item will be presented by Associate Planner Julia DiCotto.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Julia DiCotto, and I'm here to present to you tonight a request for an approval of a conditional use permit to allow a 6,584-square-foot retail cannabis dispensary. The project is located on Paris Boulevard at 14070 in an existing two-building shopping center just south of Alessandro Boulevard. The site is surrounded by commercial businesses to the north and west with residential R15 to the south and to the east with an approved residential apartment complex at that location. The existing building is a one-story building, 6,580 square feet. The existing shopping center has 70 parking spaces, and the proposed use, along with the existing building, can accommodate, the parking spaces can accommodate those uses. The, the project as designed has the, the floor plan, the, the lobby area and the dispensary area and the other ancillary build, offices and storage units that are building areas that are required by the municipal code. The project complies with the city's municipal code regarding cannabis. It has the safety and security plan, which it's required to do so. It also has an odor control plan. The applicant has met those requirements. The access to the site is from Alessandro Boulevard, I'm, I'm sorry, Paris Boulevard, with a secondary access coming in from the driveway to the, the north. The project does not include any expansion to the outside of the building other than painting and some work to the actual building, but no additions to the building. The project was reviewed by staff, meets all the requirements for the city's municipal code of cannabis, including... code of cannabis, including Title Nine and Title Five. The notice of hearing was sent to all property owners within six hundred feet, was noticed on the site, as well as in the newspaper. To date, we have received one letter in opposition to the project which you have received. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six, certifying that the conditional use permit is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as in Class One exemption for existing facilities, and approve conditional use permit Pen nineteen dash twenty twenty, subject to the attached conditions of approval and Attachment A. This concludes my presentation, and at this time, the applicant and myself are here to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions of staff at this time before we welcome the applicant? So we're ready for the applicant.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, and thank you for that, Mr. DiCotto. I'm here representing the applicant. My name is Eric Lightman. I'm his general counsel, and I'm, I've been supportive of the group through this whole process. We worked out a licensing deal with an operator who's had some significant experience operating other cannabis dispensaries. So Cola Health is going to rely on that expertise in order for the security, some of the odor mitigation, some of the parking situation, just to make sure that it's a smoothly operating facility. They're also very community-centric, focused on fitting into the community. We're gonna make a strong effort to hire locally, to find qualified people in the community to fill the bud tender positions and some of the greeting positions. We are excited about this opportunity, and, you know, we understand that in the past, cannabis has had a significant stigma in a lot of communities. And it's our, it's our kind of mission to alleviate those concerns and to show people that this is not something, this is not like alcohol, something that's highly addictive. It's got several positive, it can have a very positive impact on the community. Marketing to children is something that obviously we would never do. We're, you know, we plan to run a good business, hire locally, and to fit into the community. We welcome any feedback that you might have and any questions that you might have for us.
Thank you. Does commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Harris?
Yes. On the sides, and I don't know if it's the back, there's these little square stone areas. And I think aesthetically, that would look so much better if those rocks were along the whole line of the building instead of just small squares. And I don't know if that could be accommodated.
Yeah, I can certainly take a look at that and bring that up with our, with our project lead to see if we can incorporate that into, into the design. And actually, I'm gonna grab my notepad and make a note of that so that I can address that.
Any other, anything else, Mr. Harris?
No.
I have a question.
Commissioner Stevens?
I'm kind of noticing that, and there was a complaint about they're gonna be building, I guess, some apartment, isn't apartments, yeah, multifamily project. I don't see any kind of a block wall or fencing around this. Is there any?
There is not.
There is not. That's what I was looking at. Are they, in the future, are they gonna do anything? I don't know if the developer himself or the, or the units are gonna do that, but it would seem to me like they wouldn't want the residents or the kids, like they say in the letter, to be able to kind of walk through there. So I don't know. Is anybody gonna address that?
It, I did see that in the letter, and it's certainly something that we can address.
I've just seen it in the picture. I just noticed that you could see, you know, pretty good view there. And if there is gonna be a multi-unit that's gonna butt this, you would think you'd want some sort of barrier between that shopping center. I don't know who does that, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I would imagine they'd wanna put one up when they develop that.
Or maybe the people that own this development here. They might go in conjunction. I'm just saying because I know I own property, and if you're gonna put a fence or anything, the two will get together and work it out. But I'm just saying, I just noticed that there wasn't.
There is a block wall there.
Or is it? See a picture of it?
Let's see what my Google says.
But we could also look at the condition, Sean has a picture of it on the site right now. But we can also look at the conditions of approval for the apartment complex to see if they have one, if there's not.
Okay, I'm just saying because the kids, I just know the kids are gonna wanna go the fastest route they can, whether it be through a shopping center or whatever, and having, you know, there is a concern about it. That was just was my question.
I'll be sure to keep an eye on that and make sure that if there's.
Just because, like you said, the stigma.
Right, yeah.
You know, I'm sure they're not gonna be able to get into the building or anything, and they might not even notice what it is.
Right.
But I'm just saying that there might be some parents that are concerned about it.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, my satellite picture on my phone tends to show that there's a fence already around the perimeter, or perimeter, perimeter fencing. You can pass it. You can pass it. It's gonna be like the three witches at a cauldron right now. Pass it around. Any other questions of the applicant?
I do. So you're representing the applicant, then?
Cola Health Center, yeah.
So, like I say always, so your applicant is aware of all the conditions that he's gonna meet, right?
Yes.
According to the staff.
Of course, yeah. We've been working closely with them. They're aware. They've been, you know, every step of the way, they've been informed of everything. They've been having their input into the layout and the design and everything, so.
Always, my big concern is always safety for the, for the residents, especially in the future, when they do build those two hundred and seventy-two units. I've been there twice, so I've seen walls there for sure. But again, we can always address it with the next developer, but my thing is that just stay open-minded to work together, to make sure that there's some kind of barrier between you and the property in the future. That's what I'm asking, that you stay open-minded.
Of course.
Thank you.
Does, is, does the applicant own, own the building, or is this a lease situation? It's a lease situation, so. Yeah. Okay, any other, any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. Now's the time for any public comment regarding this agenda item.
We have no comments, sir.
Well, then, then that's that. Then it's time to move on to deliberations.
I'll start it, Mr. Sims. I went, like I just said, I went by there twice. The first time to find it, and then to look up, and then it was wise, you know? It's like, okay, we're gonna convert another building into a dispensary, and that's good, because the way we look at the layout is gonna look well, fitted into that neighborhood, because it's its own building. There's nothing attached to that building. It has like its own parking on the side. I mean, it's set well in that plaza, so that's what I like about that. And I went back the second time after reading the letter twice, and, you know, and I looked at everything that he wrote, and I was concerned about his letter, because I do live in the city of Moreno Valley. And I thought about if the, if the building were, if the two hundred and seventy-two apartments were there already, and the dispensary was not, people would get their cannabis from somewhere else, and they would still bring it to the, where they live, and even if it got dropped, like he mentioned, in the street, it would not be this dispensary's fault. You know, because it's gonna happen regardless, because they're gonna go to other places and get whatever they want. And even if they drop it, we cannot blame the future dispensary for what we don't know could happen, because again, the two hundred and seventy-two units are not built yet. So I'm hoping that when they do are built, that they keep the property well-maintained. You know, they do their part, and the dispensary does their part, and we can avoid things from being spilled or left, because again, it could be anybody that walks up and down those streets. Because I got out of my truck, and I went around the whole neighborhood to look at that raw land. You know, so anybody can do anything. We can't blame the dispensary or anything that's in that plaza. So I go back to the main thing. I go back to the staff report. That's what's important to me, to make sure that all the safety features are in this condition. So if anything happens, we know that, like I asked the rep to make sure that the, the owner knows all the conditions, and that's what's important to me, that this project is in the right place according to the, to the location that was approved. All these things meet the criteria of this dispensary being in that corner. And that's what I like about, and I like the new look. Definitely, it's gonna have a better, new look.
Any other comments or deliberations, questions?
I got one here. I think this is, be a big improvement for that corner, and it's, and like Raphael said, it's a great location for this deal, and I'm gonna vote in favor of the project.
Any other comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion.
Well, it's a dueling motion.
Oh, yeah.
You wanna go ahead?
Okay, let's see here. We'll make a motion for the Planning Commission to approve Pen one nine zero one one six, and I believe that's for the exemption of SEQA, and also approve the plot pan for, plot plan for one nine zero one six six.
I think that's the.
We may be on a different one.
That's the right one. Sixty-three.
Page fifty-eight, I think we're on.
Oh, I'm sixty-eight. Oh, I got them backwards here. Yeah, I did. I turned to the wrong page. This is, okay, make a motion for, to approve Pen one nine zero two two zero. That's the right one.
Is it, no, it's the, I think we're looking for, approve the resolution twenty.
Resolution twenty, twenty dash oh six.
Yeah, right there. One nine zero two two zero.
Well, I think, I think what we need to do is adopt or recommend approval of the resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty zero six.
Yeah.
And then we have a exemption from SEQA and a plot plan. So the twenty twenty, twenty twenty oh six covers everything?
Yeah, I believe so. Is that correct?
Yes, if you just make a motion to approve the resolution, you're approving the planning, plot plans, and conditions that are attached.
Perfect. Okay, I make a, a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty zero six.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a first and a second. Yeah, please vote, or we're gonna try it again? Okay, please cast your vote.
Can you try one more time, sir?
Star? It's, it's not happy with me today.
No, let's do.
Do you have the star?
I do have a star. I, I have a participation ribbon and everything.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Brugeras?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Yes.
Commissioner Korsak?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Baker?
Yes.
Chairperson Sims?
Yes. That sounded like a seven oh right there. Congratulations, and can we have a staff wrap up?
The Planning Commission's action is an appealable action. Any party that would wish to file an appeal would need to do so within fifteen days, filed in writing directed towards the Community Development Director with the appropriate fee. If an appeal is filed, it will be scheduled for consideration by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck on your project. So it's my understanding that our next item, number three, a conditional use permit for retail cannabis dispensary downtown Connect, has requested a continuance until April twenty-third, the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Yeah, Senior Planner Sean Keller-Her can confirm that?
Yes, that is correct. They are requesting continuance.
So do we need to approve a, make a motion to approve it and all that? Okay, so do we have a motion to continue item number three, this conditional use permit for retail cannabis dispensary downtown Connect? Do we continue to the April twenty-third Plan Commission?
I motioned that. Motion, yes, agree?
Okay.
Is that, is that okay?
About that, yeah, that was correct.
Okay, and do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please, well.
Who's the second by? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Baker.
Commissioner Baker.
Do you roll call vote?
Sure.
Commissioner Brugeras?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Yes.
Commissioner Korsak?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Baker?
Yes.
Chairperson Sims?
Yes. Okay, so that pretty much wraps us up, except do we have any staff comments?
Here.
Any commissioner comments?
I do, sir.
Very good.
I wanna say thank you to the staff for sending us last weekend to the Planning Commission Cannabis Conference. We had a fun time. We learned a lot. We met a lot of people from all over the state. And it was fun. I mean, after dinner, you go out with the staff and the commissioners, and you bound, you bound a different relationship, and there's no more work. So we have fun having dinner and walking around the city and enjoying. And also, I was glad to visit the Capitol. I had fun being inside the Capitol. It was great. So I thank the city and the staff for allowing us to go and to be educated, to really to come back with knowledge and prepare ourselves for the future with public housing, because that's a big issue that the governor wants in our city to get done. It's gonna work well, because we're in our general plan update, so we have the advantage from, from all those cities that we met there. We are on top. Moreno Valley is on top, so I'm grateful for that trip.
Any other comments, commissioners? All right, well, then we're gonna.
To get the information that you had requested in the beginning about the vacant buildings and what they're really doing to try to get some of those occupied. I know it's a hard job, and I don't know who has that job. Nobody wants that job. But I'm just saying that it is, it is an ongoing problem. And we've got some businesses that we know that have gone out of business, and now we've got a building sitting there. So it's kind of like, I wish, you know, I wish we had a magic wand and we could get those filled up. But is there any way that if they're not, can they be? is there any way that if they're not, can they be like remodeled or done something to them so they be, you know, or do you have to really kind of press the owners on that?
Well, actually, since we're talking a minute ago about general plan, the general plan update is going to include an economic development element.
Okay.
So we should have some strategies and policies and goals in that document that can address.
Okay, so on the general plan, we can kind of make a thing for that?
There will be a whole, a whole economic development element.
Because we really need that badly, I think, in this city. Okay.
Commissioner Harris?
Uh, yes, I, I would like to ask the number of smoke shops that we have in Moreno Valley. A lot of the smoke shops seems to attract an undesirable group of folks loitering in the area and stuff, and I, I just wondered if we had any kind of idea how many smoke shops and maybe the City Council could, you know, if we've got like way more than, I don't think anybody knows.
I actually think we do have, we do have that information. I just don't know off the top of my head.
But it was, the question was asked one time at, at a meeting, and somebody said, I have no idea.
I couldn't find out and let you know.
Okay, thanks.
I have to, I have to say, I, I got on the website, and I posted pictures and a, of a little encampment, and it's gone. It was magic, and so I would encourage anybody that you see something that you don't want, there's, get on the website, and there's a space where you can notify, notify the city, and I never got contacted back, but, you know, it didn't happen overnight, but within about two weeks, presto, it was gone, it was dealt with. So it's good. So my congratulations on that.
Well, I think that if the residents are proactive about that, it does happen, because I know where I live, that same thing happened, and my friend called, and they came out, and they, they left, you know? But you have to be proactive. Just complaining or seeing something, it's not gonna happen. So if the residents, like Jeff said, if they, if they will report or take a picture or whatever, you know, a lot of things can happen, but you have to be proactive.
And then the last thing, I don't, and I don't know if this is something, but as I was driving in, our federal post office could use a little code enforcement on their front yard. It's, out of everybody on the street, that's the one that sticks out like a sore thumb, so maybe we could send a letter to Uncle Don or somebody to get that sorted out, but anyhow. With that, is there any other comments? We can adjourn our meeting tonight until at seven fifty-five, or seven fifty-six. Have a good evening.